This is a call to order of the Board of Education, Mount Healthy City Schools, October the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not to be considered a public meeting. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Present.
Ms. Bryant.
Here.
Ms. Ellis.
Present.
Mr. Kilgore.
And Dr. Turner.
Here.
Okay, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we still do this executive session?
Um, we do.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna go in an executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Okay, we'll go into exact at six, six oh five.
Can we use my conference room?
Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Turn on the names.
Uh, Turner and Anderson.
Anybody got a question? Can we have a vote?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Okay, we'll be right back. Session. Um, any changes, additions, corrections to the agenda? Six twenty-five. Um. Come on, play some.
I, I move to accept the agenda as written.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Now, I know y'all ain't got no question, so we can have a roll call.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Okay, the members of the board have had the minutes and I wanna know if there was any additions, corrections. Not gonna have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Okay, um, under special orders, the Mount Healthy Teachers Association.
Ms. Wakefield.
Um, I just wanted to let you all know that we just wrapped up our membership and we have two hundred and fifty-one members this year, which is about ninety percent.
Yay, that's awesome. Impressive.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, next, you got any communication?
We, we do, we have one student, there's one card that we would like to speak on hoodies.
Okay, well, give us your name and write it up here.
Here.
Oh. Calvin Adams.
Yes.
Okay, what do you wanna tell us about hoodies?
Uh, well, I know we're addressing it today about, you know, the hoodie problem and the policy about that, but it's one thing I'm just kinda confused about in general about the hoodies. It's like, why was it taken away in the first place? And what was the main reasons for taking it away? Cause I know that a lot of stuff happened before, you know, the whole hoodies was taken away in general, but I just wanna know why, what was the process from taking away hoodies and going out of uniform in general of the whole public area?
Discuss that, what we discussed earlier. Uniforms and the dress code.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine. Also, I got one more thing. Um, one thing I realized, only, this is my second time ever coming to a board meeting, but, uh, looking around the room, I got one, like, specific question. Anytime I'm here or going around, I barely see any black men, like, addressing anything, really. And other than me and the other two that, thirty that came here, I'm just questioning, why is that? Right.
Why is there no?
Men of color, like, addressing anything to any types of sorts that's happened on the Board of Education.
I ain't trying to be smart, but where are they at?
Well.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can't force anybody to come here.
Yeah.
We can only invite, just like we do everybody else, but if they choose not to come, there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I understand that. I wasn't like trying to say like, it's y'all fault that's no black.
We'll make that project to find out.
Hey.
No, I'm serious. I mean, that's the only way you can find out. I mean, sometime, you have to understand Board of Education, the most people that board, um, and most of the time when people come, it's because of a controversy. Now, when we were having controversy at various times this year, you had everybody in there, but soon as it was settled, one way or the other, you don't see people anymore. Well, I'm glad to see you here.
Thank you. That's, that's all.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Well, when we get to hoodies, we'll talk about that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, anything else? Okay, I don't have my report for some reason. No, I know why. I was rushing out of the house this morning and forgot everything. You got anything for the legislators?
They must all be in campaign mode right now, cause they just don't seem to be doing, yeah.
I didn't see nothing out there myself.
There's, there's nothing at the moment. I, I'm kinda, I won't be surprised if there's not a whole lot until after the new session gets started in January. They, they just kinda seem to have all checked out for now.
Yeah, okay.
That might not be a bad thing.
Okay, report is a treasure.
Thank you. Uh, you, I have a recommendation to accept the schedule of bills for August of two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Two seconds. Oh, two.
Truly.
All right, any questions? Do we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. You also have the financial statements for August of two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to recommend their acceptance.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have, just to you.
Okay, now we'll have the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So, just as informational items, we did receive a comprehensive literacy state development sub grant for three hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents from the U.S. Department of Education. So we are very excited about that. And just before this meeting, Dr. Wilson informed me that we received a two hundred thousand dollar grant for the high school specifically to help with literacy and math. And so, Dr. Wilson, Jana, both of their teams, or their teams working very, very hard to make that happen. It doesn't happen by accident, and so we are so excited that we're receiving that money so that we can continue our efforts on literacy and our math initiatives. So, great job, guys. Just an informational item, there are some days that the district buildings are going to be closed around the holidays, so we just wanted to put them on the agenda. Normally, no one shows up anyway, but we, this would be November twenty-third, that is actually an exchange trade-off day. Our teachers work on conferences, they work like a twelve-hour day, and then they do that twice, and then they get that day off as an exchange. So that is why teachers do not work on the twenty-third. Did you wanna say anything about that, Julie?
Is that Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday, yes.
Okay.
Then the twenty-fourth, that is Thanksgiving Day, we're closed for the holiday. We're also closed the day after, which is the twenty-fifth. Last year, we closed from the day after Christmas until we came back for New Year's, and we're again going to be closed that week. And then we just went ahead and put on, instead of having separate times, April tenth is the Monday after Easter, and there will not be people in the buildings on that day as well.
Explain the December twenty-sixth.
That is some.
What, is this on the weekend this year?
That's the month, yeah, Christmas is on Sunday.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. So they're gonna go to school through that Friday?
They go until Wednesday, twenty-third.
Okay.
And so, the buildings will still, you know, be open the twenty-third, but then twenty-fourth is a hol- wait, no, twenty-fourth is Saturday, so I guess they do go till Fri- Friday?
Yeah, Christmas is.
Twenty-first.
We go until twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
And then officially, the holidays don't start until the twenty-fourth, and then Christmas is on a Sunday this year.
Okay.
We just wanted to note, you may have seen the news, that Sam Hubbard from the Bengals was all over Mount Healthy a few weeks ago. We were very excited about that. He had, um, assembly with our students, and we had developed a partnership with Crayons to Computers. They, in the past, our teachers would have to go to Crayons to Computers and get supplies that could be given to our students. Some teachers did, some teachers didn't. Crayons to Computer worked with Mount Healthy, so that every single school building has a closet, and they bring the supplies to us. So if a teacher needs something, if students need something, every one of our buildings has a closet, and they have been keeping those supplied with basic school supplies. Through the partnership, Sam Hubbard asked, he was looking to provide snacks and some food items for students, so he partnered with us with Crayons to Computers, and they're called Hubbard's Cupboard. And so, there's also, if a teacher needed to get, our teachers, a lot of times in the past, they would just use their own money for the things that we're talking about now. They would buy school supplies, they would buy granola bars, they would have water, things like that. So it's nice that we're able to offer some of those things and not have it at the district's expense, or what a lot of times happened, our teachers, who stepped in and provided that for our students. So we are really excited about that. There's also some hygiene products in the cupboard. Oh, yeah, Levanda says it was showcased in the Bengals game, so they showed a commercial or.
They used to do a commercial, first hand, and then they show our products, but.
Nice.
So, exciting times. We had our alumni event with Homecoming, which was October seventh, and Bryce and Lori did a fantastic job with that. They developed T-shirts that had the old logo, the new logo, and it said Owls Fly Home, and had Mount Healthy alum on the back. It was a great event when we were passing out T-shirts. Levanda and I went over and helped a little bit, and people were so excited to be there. Some of them said that they had not returned since they graduated. Many of them wore their spirit wear from when they were in school, leather jackets, senior T-shirts. One lady had on shorts for, like, her class had shorts and they had the year on it. So it was just really exciting to, um, see the alum come out and just talk with each other. Bryce had a background where they could take pictures with the classes. We took the different decade pictures. He also provide, arranged for food trucks to be there, so you could get tacos or some barbecue, and they could sit and talk with each other, and so it was, it was a fantastic event. So we appreciate all the hard work, and the pictures have been fantastic. So, thank you, guys, for everything you did with that event. If you went to the game, I'm telling you, the alumni cheerleaders, they were amazing. I'm serious, I was like, wow, they were just right in step with all of our current cheerleaders, so I was so impressed. And the band, alumni band, played with the band, and so that was just, it was a great event. The stands were packed, Derek has been working with some of our student groups, and they were there cheering. It, it was just a fantastic event, so we were excited for that. The United Methodist Church donated twelve bags of school supplies to North and South Elementary, six each, so we're always happy to get donations. We are going, we do have a lot of obsolete athletic equipment, and we are going to be either donating or disposing of it if it's not safe to use anymore. We have some things that have been, um, tagged unsafe, so we wouldn't want to pass that along to anyone. B is a recommendation to approve a stipend agreement with the Hamilton County Public Health District to support the implementation of evidence-based mitigation strategies, and strategies that support ongoing community resiliency. This is a stipend that they are giving the school for three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Did I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I know you, you second.
I, maybe she's second.
So, okay. Well, I had it right at the end, but I've changed it. Okay, any questions? Do we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to approve the Mount Healthy Administrative Handbook and to permit the superintendent and/or human resource executive director to update as needed. Chuck Ogden, Dr. Ogden, has done a fantastic job putting this together. We just wanted to have a handbook where administrators could very clearly see the expectation, the number of days to work, what we expect if you take a sick day, a personal day, you know, a vacation day. Um, we just didn't have one in the district, so we, you know, we try to be as clear as we can with our procedures and policies.
Okay, did I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Do y'all have any questions? Do we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is the recommendation to approve the Mount Healthy Exempt Handbook and permit the superintendent and/or human resource executive director to update as needed. Same approach, just trying to make sure that things are clear, and when people, you know, join us, we can give them a handbook so that they can understand our procedures.
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is recommendation to approve Education Destination two point O, a Framework for Excellence. We've reviewed it a few months, you know, we added the glossary and did a few other things. Appreciate everything that Jana has done on that with the graphic, and Bryce helped with that as well. Sarah has also been helping with that. So once it's approved, we will print it and start getting it to the buildings.
Did I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Do we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Ms. Ellis.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is the recommendation to adopt the revised dress code for all Mount Healthy City School District students effective with the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and I'll try to answer a few questions. When we first, we did a lot of surveying of the high school, specifically junior high, senior high last year, stu- asking students about dress, you know, so what we got back was that the students felt like they had the right to express themselves through their dress in appropriate ways. So that is actually what started this journey of looking at, do we continue with the uniforms, or do we have a dress code that is more similar to some of our surrounding high schools, where students could make the choice of what to wear, as long as it was appropriate? And so, when we started down that path, a team was actually developed over the summer, where we had board members, we had some parents, we had teachers, we had administrators, there was student input as well, and they looked at a lot of different samples of dress codes. They had a lot of discussions about dress codes, and the dress code that actually was put into, um, practice at the beginning of the year was based on that committee recommendation. So the board had a lot of discussion about why to go. I can tell you, hoodies in particular, the reason initially that hoodies, they wanted you to wear them to school, but then put them in the locker, is because some students use the hood to isolate and not participate in class. So, just like in life, sometimes you start with a procedure, and then you have to reflect on the procedure. So, throughout the quarter, we sent out parent surveys to see what the families thought about the proceed, what was in play. Is it working well for you? Um, we also balance, you know, we want clothes to not be a distraction, but we really are about education. We want to be in school and, and engaging in education and not spending time on people wearing hats and things like that. So, in the review and the surveys when they came back, a large issue was hoodies, and families were saying to us that they felt that if students were wearing hoodies responsibly, that they should be allowed to wear hoodies. And we tried to really think about what we're doing and the reflection. So after the, the team got back together again and looked at this issue, and through the discussion, they felt like they should have said about hoodies, that they treat the hood the same way you would treat a hat. That if a student had it over their head, and they were being inappropriate in class and isolating, then the teacher needed to deal with that. And so, because of student feedback, a lot of student feedback, family feedback, we are bringing it to the board to change the policy where that students can wear their hoodies to school, they can wear them in class, they cannot put the hood over their head. The other issue, or the other part that will be changed in the dress code, they, you know, all of our buildings are air-conditioned, and a lot of students said the reason they needed their hoodie is because it was so cold in the buildings. So initially, they decided to allow shorts, and with the stipulation that shorts would hit about mid, mid-thigh. In the dress code, you could wear shorts, but they couldn't be really short. Uh, the feedback that we received is that that was not being followed, and students, by and large, felt the buildings were cold anyway, so we are removing shorts out of the dress code. So, you cannot wear shorts anymore to school. So those are the two changes. So going into winter, hopefully, that is not an issue, but of course, in athletic events, if you needed it for PE or something like that, you obviously could. But hoodies is the biggest issue that we continue to hear about, so that.
If I could jump in, so it was, Ms. Anderson and I were on the committee that discussed it in, in the first place, and there was discussion about, because hoodies have been an issue forever. I mean, it, have, kids having them up, it makes it harder for the teacher to see, you know, you, beginning of the year when you're learning the teach, the kids' names, and they're like this, and they have a hood over, you know, hood up and all that kinda thing. I think initially it was, we'll just say no hoodies, because we didn't want the teachers to have to be hoodie cops all day long. Um, so, like Dr. Hawkins said, now we, we're saying, those are good arguments. If it's cold in the building, and, I mean, you're wearing a hoodie, a hoodie's nice and warm. Um, so, with the understanding that students will have to understand, can't have the hood up, and if teachers start having to have that battle every single day, we'll revisit it again, but the, it, it was never the hoodies itself, it's just we're trying to keep the teachers from having to just constantly deal with minor things. And that's partly why we got rid of the uniform, too, because there were so many issues with, you know, well, you're not quite in uniform, and sending kids home for that sort of thing, we just, you know, we, we decided wasn't the best thing to be doing, so.
Cause our goal is that students are engaged in academics, whatever that is. That's what we want, but we also want you to feel that you've had a, that you have a voice, and that's why when we started hearing different types of feedback, you know, we considered it, we then brought it to the board tonight, it's officially the board's decision, because it is a policy. So when something is part of policy, in order to change it, I can't just change it. I can't say tomorrow, everyone can wear whatever it might be, it requires board action, and so that's why we brought it tonight to the board.
Ms. Anderson, did you wanna say any more about the discussions we had?
No, I don't think so. I mean, you guys have said it all, I think that it was just in an effort to make it, make it easier on the teachers to bring the focus to the classroom instead of the wardrobe. I think that's what we've done with everything, with, with the, uh, with the uniforms and the wardrobe, so hopefully, hopefully this.
With all of it, we, we asked, how does this affect the teachers? How does this affect the students? And so, if it was gonna make it harder on either of those groups, then we would have, you know, a pretty lengthy discussion about it, but.
Yeah.
I like hoodies, so.
Yeah.
You like what?
Hoodies. When you're cold, they're nice and toasty.
Did that answer your question?
Well, I agree with you. Um, every coat and sweatshirt I had had the hood on it. But I put it, I'd put man up, like, when I go to church, for some reason, I find ones that have the air draft there, and so I will put it up on my head, but it's only temporarily, but I don't like umbrellas, so I put a hood on my head when I go out. But as a rule, you don't wear a hat in, in a building, at least most men are not supposed to. I don't know where that came from, but they don't wear hats in buildings. So I, to me, that's just another form of a hat, and you shouldn't have it on your head. But like, you know, she was saying, if it's cold in there, there's a draft blowing down on you, I could, I could see you putting the hood up, but you shouldn't have it on your head the whole day. There's no excuse for it.
Well, but they, they can't put it up in class, though.
Like, if they were walking to school, they could.
Right, but not in class, yeah.
Yeah, but even, even when I walk around with mine, when I get to a building, I take it off my head, you know, I don't leave it on my head, but, uh, I don't know. I, I, personally, when I see young men walking around with hoods on their heads, I think you're trying to hide something, no matter what it is. I think that's my training thought, may not be nobody else's, but, you know, people tend to move away from you when they see you coming down the street with a hood up on your head, and it ain't raining, and it ain't no other reason for you to have it on there, unless it was cold, you know? But anyway, that's just my training thought.
Well, I think the, the younger generations look at it very differently. They, for them, it's, it's part of their self-chosen uniform.
Yeah.
But, you know, not in class.
Well, no, I agree with you, it shouldn't be in the classroom, you know, but like you said, their training thought is not the same as ours. What, what did you wanna say about?
Good.
Yeah.
Not, I mean, not.
It's referring to whole. Of all of the dress code, the two areas that students did not follow were hoodies and shorts. So the staff with the hoodies, they would walk you to your locker and they would say, put it in your locker. With the shorts, it was a lot more problematic, because students, you know, they didn't have anything to wear. They ended up being retained in the office, people were supposed to bring it to them. And it ended up where a lot of students were losing educational time, because we clearly defined the length of the shorts, they had to hit mid thigh or longer. And when we started looking at it, they started collecting the data on students that were sending them. There was less than 10% of the students that were wearing them at the appropriate length. So that was where, again, it became a situation where students were being removed from class because they were not following the dress code. And that was something, our buildings are not warm. So if there was a situation, for instance, let's say our air conditioning went out and it really was a situation where students were just very hot, we would, yeah, we could definitely say, okay, because there's no air conditioning, you're allowed to wear shorts. If we were having a field day, because you're going to be outside and that's appropriate for that, we would make that allowance the same way we would for a PE class. But as far as day-to-day, wearing things in school, that was just one area that students were not following. Teachers, administrators were spending a lot of time with it. And there wasn't a purpose, like hoodies keeping you warm. The shorts, you know, they didn't have that same purpose. Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept those two changes to the dress code. That hoodies are now allowed, but hoods cannot be up in class. And shorts are no longer allowed, except under special circumstances that will be announced.
Second. Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis?
Yeah.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the recommendation to accept the following donations. Mount Healthy Early Learning Center received $1,500 from Holy Trinity St. Nicholas Orthodox Church. And the Mount Healthy Girls Basketball Team received $100 donated by the Mount Healthy Class of 1982 Reunion Committee. So moved. Second. Is there any question? Do we have real copies? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item H is the first reading for recommended Mount Healthy Board of Education by law and policy changes. They're listed below, Dr. Ogden has been working on policies. This would just be the first reading and then we would come back next month, but we are trying to update our policies. We found several conflicting policies with dates and a variety of things. And so we're just trying to make sure that that's all cleaned up. Item I is the consent agenda. One thing that we did add to the consent agenda from input from our teachers was that as we're hiring people specific to grant-funded positions, we are noting it next to them. So we've received several grants to help students that are experiencing homelessness. And those members who are hired to work with that population would only receive funding while the grant was in place. So when the grant is finished, unless there's another grant, they would not continue in that position. So we're trying to add that next to positions that are directly impacted by that. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we have any questions? Do we have a vote? Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay, 12, 13, and 14, we got anything to throw in there? Okay, the date of the next Board of Education meeting will be Monday, November 21st at 6:00 PM. We have a work session, will be, are we going to add it down?
We are, yes.
So I guess that's on you.
Okay, so-
We'll have a work session, district report card.
So the work session is to help just everyone understand more about our district report card. And there have been some significant changes with the report card in the state of Ohio. So Connie Solano, who is our data person, she is over our Performance and Accountability Department, is going to give a quick overview, this won't be long, on some of the most significant changes related to the report card. And we are, I will say, we are continuing, you know, to find areas that we can improve, data that maybe had not been reported in the past, that we are now trying to clean up and report. So our report card is just going to continue to become better and better. So we are excited about the work that Connie is doing with our buildings. Can we give Connie a mic?
I've got it. Thank you. Okay, so the 21, 22 report card is of reflection on what happened in the year 2021, 2022. By law, the report cards have to be released by September 15th. So we received our report card online on September 15th. So what you're seeing is a reflection of the last school year. So a couple of things have changed on our report card from previous years. For one, we are no longer getting letter grades. It used to be that you get an A through F on six of the, they call it components, but six of the measures on the report card. So they've changed that from letter grades to stars. So if you got an A, you got five stars, if you got an F, you got one star. So keep that in mind, we don't know if it's eventually going to be changed to emojis. But right now, we're stars, okay? So because we're just coming out of the pandemic, we did not get an overall grade this year. However, we did get individual component grades. So what is a component? A component is like achievement or K-3 literacy, where they look at kids who in grades K to three were off track and then what percent of them became on track. We look at graduation rates, we look at gap. Gap is the old AYP, adequate yearly progress. Now it's, you're closing the gap for each subgroup, to show that your subgroups are making gains and catching up with all students. And so they did some changes in the report card. Achievement, if you guys remember, it was always based, it was based on two measures. One was the percent of kids who actually passed a test on each, in each test. They wanted 80% of the kids on more to pass. So like for math in third grade, if 80% of your kids pass that test, then you met the indicator for that grade and subject. And so they realized that that probably wasn't the fairest, because for the most part, many of our city schools weren't getting indicators. However, what they were able to show is that the kids were moving up, they were making gains. And so another part of the achievement report card was called the performance index. And you got points based on a percent of tests that were basic, limited, proficient, accomplished, that's the old accelerated, and also advanced. So you guys who got scores, you know what I'm talking about, right? When you get your score and you would see, are you limited, are you basic, right? So now what they've done is they've removed out of the score, the graded score, the indicators met. So they're no longer, they'll report it, they'll show you what percent of your kids pass a test, but you're not going to be, we're not going to be graded on that. What they're going to do is only look at what percent of your kids fell in each of the categories. You know, the limited, the basic, the proficient, it used to be accelerated, now it's called accomplished and also advanced. That's important, because that performance index is also a major player in the gap as well. So in the achievement is looking at your performance index for all kids who took a state test. And your gap is actually looking at, how did your African-American students do? How did your English learners do? How did your kids on IEPs do, et cetera? And so the other big thing that impacted districts was in the K-3 literacy, if you had a third grader in the fall score on track on our diagnostic test, but in the spring didn't pass the test, and that student also was not on a reading improvement plan, you got dinged for it. They actually took points away from you. So that was always an issue for districts, because if you were on track, you didn't have to put them on a ramp, right? But ODE said, okay, yeah, you don't have to put them on the ramp, but if they still pass the test and you didn't have them on the ramp, then you would get points deducted. So a lot of districts, what they did, they put every third grader on a ramp, right? So that's changed. So they no longer penalize districts if you do not have third graders on ramps. So we are now just putting third graders who really need to be on a ramp, on a ramp. And then progress, progress is the value added. And we actually have some good news, I'll show you that in a minute. Progress is how much did your kids grow, right? And so growth doesn't necessarily mean they pass the test, it just means they moved in their percentile of scores from either, from where they were to a higher place, okay? And we'll see some kids in some schools were able to do that. So Mount Healthy South Elementary School earned four stars in progress and gap.
That's fantastic.
So remember, if five stars is a A, what's four stars?
B.
Right, thank you. North Elementary got three stars. And it's all good, it's great. So three stars means that they met, they did what was expected of them, okay? So in other words, the state expects, has an expectation based on how your kids perform, and they actually met that expectation, so three stars is still good. The high school met expectation for American government, which is good. So we need to work on the other end, of course, but that's still good. And the district as a whole earned the highest level for progress in English language arts. That's grade four through eight, which is awesome.
And can I just say, that is a lot because of Jana's work?
Yes.
And the foundation that it is everyone but Jana, really with the literacy initiatives that she's brought to the district.
And one thing I forgot to add on here is that our gifted students were able to show the highest growth as well. And that's by five, right? And that's really, that tends to be harder, right? Because your gifted kids end up scoring on the higher end of the test scale score. So they're still able to show that whatever percentile they landed in, whether that's 80th percentile, 85th percentile, they were still able to beat that from, within one year, from the 2021 to the 2122. So that's still great news. And I believe the buildings have been celebrating that with their teachers. You know, there's nothing like coming back and being surprised, like, wow, we actually showed some growth. So we're hoping that we'll continue to do that.
And Connie, as you go to the next slide, the teachers did an amazing job. Because remember, last year we were coming out of the pandemic and so some of our students had not physically been in school in almost two years and yet our teaching staff were, they worked and showed that kind of progress. I mean, that really, really is amazing.
And it's based on one year, so it's literally, what did they do in 2122, based on where those kids came in at the beginning of the year. So that's fantastic. So as I mentioned before, the performance index is key, because it's driving both your achievement grade and also your gap grade. So one of the things about the gap, as I mentioned, it's not just looking at all kids like your achievement is. It's actually looking how each subgroup is doing, okay? And the goal is that each subgroup meets their target for gap. Okay, and the target can be met either by, you know, they have a certain percent, a certain PI score for each subgroup, and every year that score goes up. And if they're either meeting their PI score or they're showing growth for that subgroup of kids, then they're going to meet their points, they're going to earn their points for gap. And so what we need to do, and we've talked about this as a team, and we've actually showed this to some teachers as well, there's two things we've got to do. We've got to keep our kids from slipping back, okay? And I'm going to show you a slide for that. And what do I mean for that? We have to keep that performance index increasing. So, and then the other thing we have to do is we have to try to find a way to increase the number of kids or the percentage of test scores that bump up to the next level. So two things, we got to reduce the amount of kids that are slipping back, but we also want to increase the amount of kids moving forward. And I'm going to show you towards the end how that performance index is calculated. But now I'm going to just show you, I think, yes. On your test scores, it gives you performance levels, right? So for your limited, limited is a one. And there's a range of scores that fall under limited, those are the lower end of the scores. And then the next range is called basic, that's two. The next range are proficient scores, that's three. And then there is, it used to be accelerated, now they're called accomplished scores, that's four. And then five are your advanced scores. So if you just follow with me, remember, one is limited and five is advanced. So I pulled the kids, these are grades, the kids who took a test for grades three to seven in the spring of 2021 and looked at where they fell in the performance level. And then those same kids, when they took the test the following year, where did they fall in performance level? So you'll notice, for the most part, if you were in the first performance level or limited, you pretty much stayed in that performance level, right? So 66% of the kids who were in level one stayed in level one. For performance level two or basic, 43% of them stayed in that level. For proficient, 36% of them stayed in that level, et cetera. But what else are you noticing? This is your data analysis, kids, anybody want to tell me what they're noticing? What if I had, I had a basic score, what are you noticing? Basic isn't the only score you got in the next level, right? What else are you noticing? I'm sorry? Okay, that's true. Progressivity gets lower, but look what happened. Look at the kids who were basic that went backwards into limited. 27% of the kids did that, that's a lot, right? Look at third grade, I mean proficiency level number three. You had 36.5 who maintained that place, but then you had about, what's that, 27.8 who fell back to basic and another 8% who went all the way back to limited. So this is something that we're really starting to look at. How can we keep our kids from slipping backwards? Because then you're just like a hamster on the wheel. Because then you're just like a hamster on the wheel, right? As you get more kids up, you're losing your step, because you're getting more kids, more kids are slipping back. So same thing with math. Math was a little bit more pointed, I guess. Again, you can see, for kids who were basic, forty-four percent of them went back to limited, okay? So, and then for kids who were proficient, you had about, what's that, forty-nine percent of them who fell back either one or two performance levels. So now that this is on our radar, we're going to start to look at what we can do. And one of the things we've been doing is giving the teachers, the current teachers who have the kids, how they did last year and what, what category, what subscale they were struggling in. You know, was it fractions? Was it informational text? And how did they do on those sections? Because surprisingly, you might have a kid who, they were, you know, just about on track for informational text, but where they're really struggling in is the writing piece, right? So that information gives them, that, that kind of data gives them more information to inform their instruction. Anybody have any questions? So here is the performance index simulator. So as I mentioned to you before, depending on where you fall on a test, it tells you how many points you're going to earn. So this is looking at how many tests actually scored in those categories. Like a fifth grader usually takes the math test, the ELA test, and the science test. So one fifth grader, if they took all their tests, should be three tests. So you have some kids who are untested, and if you notice over there at the, all the way to the right, you get no points if you don't test. So there's a hundred and sixty-seven tests without a, a score. How does ODE know this? Because in EMIS, we send them the data, right? We tell them who's enrolled, what grades they're in. And then from that, ODE says, okay, well, you've got these kids in tested grade. We are expecting a total of four thousand two hundred and fifty-one tests, okay? And then it'll look at how many tests were actually submitted to them. So as you can see, by far, the bulk are limited. But even if you're limited, you still get some points, right? So what they do is they take how many tests were limited, they multiply, divided by the total number of tests they expected. That gives the percent of tests that were limited. They multiply that by a hundred to get your percent, and then they weight that by point three. And then you got fifteen point three points for the kids who were limited. So as you can see, the higher your scores are, the more points, the more weight that score has, right? So for example, your kids who are proficient, you have six hundred and twenty-two tests that were proficient, divided by the total number of tests, times a hundred gives you the percent of tests. You get one point for that, that's fourteen point six. So they continue to do that. Advanced plus, what's that? So kids who are accelerated in a particular grade and subject, if they score proficient on a test, ODE bumps them up into the accomplished. So you actually get credit for them as if they scored accomplished. Kids who scored accomplished, they get bumped up into the advanced category. And kids who scored advanced, who are accelerated, they get bumped up into the advanced plus category. And so what they do, they add all these points up, you get fifty-two point six. And the maximum points, or your denominator, is based on what the top two percent of the state did, okay? So the top two percent, their maximum points that they earned was a hundred and seven. So when you divide that, you get forty-nine point zero percent. However, look at how the scale works. So have one star, which is what we got. You get one star if you are less than what? Where are my seniors? You get one star if you're less than what? Fifty percent, right? So you get one star. So how many stars did we get? Because we got forty-nine percent. How many stars was that? No, no, remember, you get one if you're under fifty. You got one point, right? What do you think happened if all these kids who were untested became limited?
Became what, limited?
Yeah, they scored limited. Yes, exactly. We would have gotten two stars. Because if all these kids who did not, all these tests were even limited, this forty-nine percent would have been fifty-one percent. And at fifty-one percent, you are at two stars. So I know it's not all, it's not just about the report card, but remember, this is what the community sees. This is what people out there see, and they want to make judgments about our great schools and our great kids. And we don't want them to make poor judgments about us, because we, we know that we're, the report card doesn't tell the whole story. We know that, okay? But, but it is one way that we are being compared to other schools and other districts in the state. Does anybody have any questions about this? Make sense? So our goal is to what? Not have any?
Untested.
Right, so that is our goal.
Is there a reason the kids weren't tested?
So the only thing, I, I don't know, and I'm, I'm just guessing here, but remember, we were in, still coming out of a pandemic.
It could have been just a hundred and sixty-seven tests. Students just didn't show up for school that day. You know, you might have one student that represents three tests. They moved out of the district, but they had been with us that whole time. There are a lot of reasons for it.
So, but what we'll have to do is just make, you know, real concerted effort, and this is like all hands on deck. Get kids to school, you know, get them in to test. If they miss it on the first day, we have make-up days. Try to get them in. And as Valerie said, we need to get them in, even if they decide to withdraw, you know, after testing. If they were still with us during that testing period, they count for us, okay? Any other thoughts or comments? So what can we do to predict how they're going to be doing on the test? And this is really important, because we spent a lot of money on this next assessment. And so, because the test is a one-and-done, right? You take it in the spring, like you work up all year for it, nervous about taking the end-of-course exam, and you don't know what's going to, and then you take the test, and that's when you find out, right? Well, what I did is I pulled grades three, four, five, six, seven, and eight data. And what this is showing is that how the kids did in third grade on the spring ELA test, English Language Arts test, in the spring of twenty-twenty-two, and how they did on the I-Ready test in ELA on the spring twenty-twenty-two. So can anybody tell me what they see, first of all, with the, with these graphs? Which way are they going? Going up? So that means there's some relationship, right? As one is going up, the other one's going up, right? And so the other thing you want to look at is how close those dots are, those are test scores, to that line, okay? The closer that, those dots are to that line, the stronger the relationship. And so for some of these, you have it up, the relationship is up into the, to point seven. And a relationship of one is a one-to-one, strong, a hundred percent relationship. So point seven is considered a pretty high, pretty strong relationship. So what we're seeing is that the ELA on the state test and the ELA on the I-Ready have strong relationships, right? So pretty decent predicti, predictability on how we're going to do on the state test. And so why is this important? One, because we're spending money on it, right? And it's showing that it is going to tell us something. But two, we take the I-Ready three times a year, right? And the I-Ready also breaks down the categories very similar to the state test. It tells you how you did in geometry, how you did in fractions, how you did in number, number sense. It tells you all that, so that you can see, are you on grade level? Are you below grade level? Are you above grade level? So it gives additional information, and it gives it to you three times before you take the state test, right? So that is something we're also working on to really make sure that people are administering the I-Ready with fidelity, because it can help you predict how your kids are going to do. Any questions on that? All right, that's all I have. Anything that you want me to cover, or any questions you have, or anything I presented? That, was it clear as mud? Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Connie. And with the I-Ready, that is something that the students, wherever they're at, it plots out a path for them for progress. So it is something that teachers have as a resource to help them as they try to help our students.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.